Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Select meeting for July 14th. All rise, please, as we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll begin tonight with public audiences. Is there anyone who'd like to address the board? Yes.
Young folks, 26th from Dry. Once again, Simsbury residents have to continue with the failed leadership. The Charter Revision Commission did not vote for a town manager, but delegated all the duties of the elected first electmen to an untrained pseudo-town manager. Charter is worded in such a way that nobody can interpret how much of the first-electing duties are delegated, leaving this all up to interpretation. According to the consultant hired by the pseudo-town manager, Tom Cook, first-elector Mary Glassman, only performs town business less than 5% of the time, and receives $113,000 for her services. It appears from the agenda that Tom Cook ingratiated himself with a salary of $114,508. The deputy director of human services received a salary of $90,000, and the new additions to staff employee benefits coordinator received $68,000. All these salary increases are retroactive, although none of these increases and new additions is in the online budgets approved by the taxpayers. Both Shawn Kimball and Tom Cook gave themselves large salary increases, and they refused to increase the police pension, and are in negotiations with the police union contract. Rich Zewitzki, the retired engineer, has been rehired as a consultant, although the town hired a full-time engineer. Other expenditures were approved that were not in the budget. It appears that first-elector Mary Glassman has tsunami budgeting, inconsistent with state law. Since the first-electman only spends less than 5% of town duties, I would suggest that she have her salary reduced to $20,000 until the town manager replaces the first-electman, and all these additions and replacements are eliminated with professional staff hired by a professional town manager. It should be noted that when Mary Glassman ran against Tom Vincent during the pumpkin debates, she promised the voters that she was in favor of a town manager. What happened to her position on this topic? The town consultant, Lee Erdman, was not charged to review the need for a town manager, since it was Tom Cook giving the charge, and he was against having this issue brought forward. Shame on Tom Cook. The Performing Arts Center is now a nonprofit organization using town land, town resources, and appointed by the Board of Selectmen, and we, the people, are unable to receive any financials or minutes of their meetings. It appears to me that they should not be exempt from disclosure. Recently, I was present at the Democratic Caucus to vote against the nomination of John Hampton for state representative. While John Hampton was accepting the nomination, he noted that when he was on the Board of Selectmen, that after deputy selectmen Lisa Heeman and first-elector Mary Glassman met, they would tell him how to vote. Who was telling him how to vote at the state? The chairman of the Democratic Party allowed non-town committee members to remain for the meeting.
That's the true church.
I was given permission to speak by the chair, and while I was asking for the Democratic Party to endorse a town manager, Dave Ryan objected to having me speak. It was Dave Ryan on the Charter Revision Commission who voted against town manager. It was Dave Ryan who was a proponent of having the town purchase the Simsbury airport, although it would lose $200,000 a year, and the owners were not selling. Both federal and state money was used to study the purchase. It was Dave Ryan who ran for first-electman and was rejected by voters. It was Dave Ryan on the zoning board who voted for a marijuana factory in town, and now we have Dave Ryan as president of the Simsbury Performing Arts Center. Recently, Dave Ryan ran to my car at the meadows around noon, although others were driving, bicycling, and walking around the grounds, and yelled to me that I could not talk without a permit. I was leaving the premises and had no intention to talk. I was told by town staff that Dave Ryan has exclusive rights to the meadow. Does he have exclusive rights of arrest? Does Dave Ryan have a gun permit? Are people allowed to bring guns to the meadows? Can Ryan include some and not others? I think it is time for first-elector Mary Glassman to deliver more chicken soup to Dave Ryan. It appears on the Secretary of State Business Inquiry that Dave Ryan appointed Uptown Kelly Espellacy as the performing arts agent. Our town attorney is a member of this law firm. On the town attorney's conflict of interest form, signed on April 29, 2014, the only conflict noted was, quote, "Firm represents the Ethel Walker School on matters unrelated to the town," end quote. Is having the firm as an agent for the performing arts also a conflict, but not noted? It appears that Tom Cook, first-elector Mary Glassman, pseudo-town manager, is now entertaining at the performing arts with the Hartford Symphony. Who hired Tom Cook to perform? On Saturday morning, the day after the concert, on April 12, 2014, I saw a large group of people placing garbage bags in the trash bins that were left on the field and dispersed throughout the meadows. This picture shows the group at the rubbish bins. I was told that the Windsor Boy Scouts were asked to clean up the meadows. This activity places the town at risk of these children and adults are hurt performing this task. Do these trash bags filled with food and drink entice animals to the meadows? Does the town's risk manager have oversight over Dave Ryan and this activity? It appears that the crooks are out of the marijuana factory. Oh, this is the, excuse me, this is your trash, and here's the marijuana factory. Excuse me. It appears that the crooks are out of the marijuana factory building with attorney carpenter in jail. The company moved out, and the potting soil was delivered to the building so they can start growing marijuana. The building is scheduled to get a certificate of occupancy on Friday, and is fortified with a large chain-linked fence. The Simsbury Police Department will be required to receive training on their role in dealing with this activity. I recently spoke with the distributor of beets for de-icing roads, and I will have the financials when I completed my investigation. Beet juice does not rust cars, can de-ice to minus 10 degrees, and is much cheaper than salt. The New York Threwaway has used it with much success, and the supplier will give the town 250 gallons to try. Beet juice is the de-icer of the future. I recently heard on my scanner that the police were called to a heroin overdose at 180 Old Farms Road at the home of George Hall. The caller stated that a family member had overdosed on heroin. The case number is case number 15946. The George Hall Farm purchased Pharaoh's Farm, and the town and the Land Trust purchased the farm. This is not the first incident related to heroin addiction in Simsbury. With fewer ambulances available on calls and delay in service, the antidote Narcan and the antidote for the effects of heroin cannot be administered in a timely manner. I would hope that some of Simsbury organizations discussing this issue would come to the aid of the families in crisis. Thank you for listening. I'll put this on www.simsbury.com and also on Simsbury Pat for your review. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Robert Kalishman, Simsbury. I like to quote Menmanides, if I may. If I am not for myself, then who will be for me? And if I am only for myself, then what am I? And if not now, when? And then there's one other, going to the good book I like to just, Valerac. Woe to him that establishes a town by injustice. Now, I attended the personnel meeting, and from what I saw up there, I didn't see a judge, nobody was dressed in black robes, just heard a lot of opinions. Penn lawyers, and I'll give you 10 opinions. Now, they're voting on things up there against the charter. 502 is against the charter. And if you're going to adopt it, let me tell you, be prepared that to have a public hearing, because if you don't have a public hearing, you could very well be in court. Because this is against the charter. The charter states that you can't do what you're doing. I don't care whose opinion you have, it's wrong. The charter, you can't change this charter. You have to have a public hearing. That's the first thing. The second thing, we've gone out and we've elected people on that personnel committee. The elected people were at loggerheads with the appointed people. The appointed people came out, they told you what the salary was going to be, they told you what they were going to get, they went retroactive in their salaries. And, gentlemen, if you needed Rich Zewitzki, fine, I agree with that. Why'd you let him retire? If he's so important to us, and his retirement came up, why'd you let him retire? Why is it necessary to have two engineers in our engineering department? If you want that, put it in the table of organization. Now, let me, let me get back. I sat here when you antagonized, agonized, and one selectman was very antagonized. He didn't know what to do, because he knew he wanted to do the right thing with the police department, but he wanted to more or less placate you, his colleagues. So what did you do? You went out. I requested two policemen. What did you give me? You gave me zero. You brought in, you brought in smoke and mirrors, and you grabbed the policeman, and you grabbed the Board of Education to pay for it, then finally somebody said, well, we're going to pay for it. But that's not to protect the citizens. Those policemen, or that policeman, is going to go in the schools. Now, let me hit you with this. You had a shooting, Wellcut Road, right? Double shooting. If you had the proper police up there at the, at the initial investigation, they would made the original arrest, the two arrests. The arrests weren't, weren't made timely. They had, they had arrest, the fellow that, that was, that was shot, they arrested the fellow that shot him later. They didn't arrest him that night. He could have shot three other people. Then the other fellow that was also a shooter, he came there, and he wasn't arrested until two, two, two weeks ago. That's number one. Number two, it was mentioned, you had an overdose in town. What's encouraging these overdose? The town's acceptance of the marijuana thing. We never had a hearing on the marijuana factory.
Thank you.
And now, what gets me, you didn't have any money for extra policemen, and now you're going to vote tonight, they're going to vote tonight on a proposal from the subcommittee or the sub-personnel committee to give Rich Zewitzki $47,000 to $55,000 to stay on, right? You shaking your head? Don't shake your head. I was up there, I heard it. You know, the point is that you people think you can more or less shake your heads and talk to the people and say to them, he doesn't know what he's talking about. You tried to embarrass me with my military record, it didn't work, and it's not going to work. And it's not going to work with the police department either. And I have a message for you, Madam Selectman, right? And the message was given to me by a friend of mine on the Drug Administration, and he said to me, I'm not going to do the Simsbury's dirty work. So if you want to clean up your drug situation in town, I suggest you hire two more policemen, because the drug enforcement people from Rocky Hill, they're not going to bail you out.
Thank you, Mr. Kalishman.
And getting back to, getting back to the policemen, there's no reason you can't get two more policemen on the force. And number, and the other thing I'd like to mention to you is this. Why is it that you passed a budget, and now you're coming in with smoke and mirrors, and you're giving all these increases to Mr., to the administrator and the administrators? All that increase, all that money, well over a million dollars, in my opinion, and you're doing it?
Mr. Kalishman, that's, thank you, that's been about six minutes.
Yeah, it's being, it's being done outside the budget. And I know you want to cut me off, because if I, if you were saying that...
No, I've given you more than five minutes, so I appreciate your comments.
That's, that's how you people operate.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes.
Still not going to pull it back. Good catch.
Stephen Horzak, 119 East Weetalk Street. I want to talk about two issues tonight. One is, I concern another land use issue, what a shock. Apparently, I've not gone to the meetings, but I understand that at the planning meeting for the gas station that is being proposed down on Hot Meadow Street in the south end, that there was a vote taken, and the vote was a tie vote, and Hiram said a tie vote passes, and had them write a positive referral. A tie vote is a negative referral, Hiram had to admit it afterwards, because it got caught, and they had to, basically, they have to redo the referral to make it a negative referral to go to zoning. Additionally, the applicant applied for a PED. Now, a PED is only allowed on 10 acres, and this person does not have 10 acres. So Hiram is now claiming, because he drove this whole bus through this, that now, for some reason, everything in town can be a PED. So it used to be, oh, well, if it's over, if it's not 10 acres, it can't be. So now, any piece of property can be a PED. So it's really kind of bad that we have this kind of sloppy planning, and this is a continuation of everything that happens. So there needs to be an investigation into this, and as I recommended last time, we perhaps wouldn't mind getting rid of Hiram and giving his money towards the police pension, because I really think we need to start over and get somebody who actually can do the job correctly. I mean, this is going to cost a lot of money, there's like, you know, there's, there's lawyers involved, and it's, it's a concern. Secondly, at the meeting a couple of weeks ago, I addressed the issues that had happened with my mom with regard to the, the program that we were supposed to be involved in. And as time has gone on, I had a couple of disturbing phone calls last week, and it really bothers me that you can't get good representation, and I'll, I'll tell you why. When I was having all these problems trying to straighten this thing out that had been totally done wrong, and by the way, all the medical field thinks this is horrifying. What had happened is, is that I had called Blumenthal's office, and I said, what do you do when you have a problem? Well, you go to your state rep or your state senator. Well, what if that's the problem, I said? Because the state rep wasn't unraveling it, because the unraveling would actually have had to make the Dems look bad. Now, instead of just unraveling it and saying, oops, they made a mistake, they basically sat there and he, he let it totally fester. And as I said, the approach that I was given was, why don't you just let this go? I'm not letting it go, and I'm completely angry about it. It has basically ruined my life. But you know what? What doesn't kill you makes you stronger. In this whole year, my life has been basically hell. And you know what? I'm getting through it, and people are going to understand and learn what has to happen for people to actually get the coverage they're supposed to get, and I'm just so horrified by what has gone on. And it went on when my mother was alive, it wasn't right. She was 91, she was frail, and I, it's just unbelievable, and the doctors are speechless about it, and I had like huge support, huge support from the medical community. The home care people are horrified by it. It's just really sickening. So it's all going to get unraveled, and it's all going to get fixed, and it's going to take lawyers and all sorts of other stuff, but I got screwed on a lot of, in a lot of ways, and it's just not right. So I think that people need to learn the lesson that when they get elected to public office, whether the person's a Democrat, a Republican, an unaffiliate, or maybe, oh yeah, worked on a third party, they still deserve to basically sit there and get represented. Because when you take the oath, you come in and you represent everyone in your town. You don't just screw them because you can. So that's where I'm at with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you all for your comments. We appreciate your being here. We're going to move to two quick presentations. Our first, the town was recently notified that we received a GFOA certificate of achievement. It's the highest honor you could receive. Based on your financial reporting in this year, it was as a result of our work by our interim finance director, which is, makes this even a more deserving, I think, award, because we threw Shawn Kimball into a very difficult situation, and not only did he do well, but he represented us to the best of his ability and the town's ability, and Shawn has received the plaque, and in order to save money, the GFOA now is not giving us any new plaques, they're giving us stickers.
You used to give us plaques. You get 20 years of stickers, if we continue to be...
But this is a huge accomplishment, and Shawn, we're very proud of the work that you did. So on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, the town, Simsbury, job well done. Someone get a picture of that?
Yes, let's get a picture.
Thank you all very much. I just want to say a quick thank you...
We'll get a picture of Shawn behind this.
Oh, yeah?
Hold up your certificate.
Oh, sure.
The accounting award picture's out, it's a newspaper.
The best looking one.
There we go.
No, not that one.
Yeah, the big one.
Everybody likes the plaque.
With your sticker.
You want to see the plaque.
Come on, do your Vanna.
Sticker?
Chief, you got to show them how to do this. You guys get awards all the time.
Thank you.
I just want to say a quick thank you to, first of all, all of the department heads that were patient with me through the process, not only the budget process, but with the audit. It was definitely interesting, starting the job on December 1st with a deadline, December 31st, in order to get this award. So it was a very interesting December and Christmas time and all that. So we, but we made it through, and I want to particularly thank, above all, Deb Sweeney in our office, was really the continuity there during the transition, and it was an enormous help. Also, Dave Gardner and Colleen O'Connor helped provide a number of important and essential information and tables for the back of the, of the Caffer. And of course, the folks at Bloom Shapiro, who were very, also patient with me as I tried to learn all their, their foreign language that is, whatever it is that auditors speak. But it was, thank you very much, and obviously to all of you for your support during that very interesting time.
Congratulations. Very well deserved. Next, I ask the chief and Captain Bolter to be here this evening to give us an update on Simsbury's medication dropbox program. I'm pleased to represent Simsbury on the CCM Connecticut Conference of Municipalities Drug and Alcohol Prevention Subcommittee. And one of the things at our recent meeting that we discussed was seven strategies for community change. We are, I'm referring that, all the documents that I get to the community for care, so I know Lisa and Cheryl will get a chance to talk about it, but one of the, the items that they say has the most impact on a community is to have a dropbox. And Simsbury was one of the first towns to have a free prescription dropbox in our community. They said that has a tremendous impact on getting drugs out of the medicine cabinet, off of our streets, off of our use. We have noticed heroin is in our communities. It's in every community in Connecticut. The chief is looking at, and he'll talk to you tonight, about Narcan has been identified as an item that our first responders are carrying. I know our ambulance is carrying that, so he'll talk to you about that. But I just want to credit the chief and the department for taking that first step in installing our prescription dropbox. So thank you, chief. And I, that'll be important for the board and the community to know what impact that has made on our town. So, chief, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mary, very much. We began the process in 2012. Basically, were approached by the Drug Enforcement Administration, wondering if he would be interested in being the first in our region to have such a box, which I basically agreed to do that. Mrs. Glassman, Mary is correct, did not, the money did not come out of the town budget, but in fact came out of the asset forfeiture money that we do when we make drug arrests. Since it was putting into place, which was in 2012, it's been here for roughly three years, we've accumulated 1,588 pounds of narcotics, of different mixtures, which ends up being 52 boxes. We had to first apply to the State of Connecticut Drug Enforcement and receive certification to go forward with the idea of putting a drug or medication box in the station. We had to have a written policy that told basically how the drugs are going to be collected, what we're going to do with them, and who was going to keep them under safe key, which we produced a policy to them, they approved it, and granted us the privilege of having such a box. We have, we happened to be the first one, I said, in the region, which ended up having us become the deposit of surrounding towns and their drugs, which is perfectly fine, that's what the whole idea was, is to get narcotics, prescription drugs off the street so that they could not be used by residents or individuals, as well as keeping the drugs from entering our water system, which is the case, which is happening all over. It takes two officers to empty out the container, one to vouch for the other. They're sealed immediately when they're taken out, which is under camera. They're taken from there and put into a storage room, under locking key, and is locked in there. We do not look inside the box, we cannot tell you what's in it, we have the requirement not to do that. So they're just sealed immediately. It could range anywhere from cough syrup all the way up to painkillers that go into the box. As I said, the box is under camera at all times, 20, it's open 24/7. Anybody can drop it, we do not ask for your name, we do not ask if you live in the town of Simsbury. You just drop it in, and we say thank you, and that's it.
Chief, do they have to be in the medicine bottles, or can they be just loose pills that you drop in?
They should be left in the containers.
With the names on them?
You could take the name off them or black it out.
Okay.
Or you take them and put them into a plastic bag.
Okay. They should be in a, in a container, doesn't have to be the bottle prescribed by the pharmacist.
No, it does not.
Okay.
We joined, as I said, several towns are looking at it now to get the box, neighboring communities. We have entered agreement with Farmington, Canton, and the Simsbury. We share our resources. Once a year, depending on what town it is, takes the material to Bridgeport for burning, which is, like I said, Farmington and Canton are involved with that. So Simsbury doesn't always take the, the load of going to Bridgeport to have the incinerators burn it. So that's where we are, and we do plan on putting up some posters inside of our pharmacies, advertising that we have such an item here.
That's great.
It is one of the most popular community projects that we have here in town of Simsbury. Any questions?
Thank you, chief. I know, as a reporter to the board, we, we are seeing an increase in the types of drugs that are being used in the capital region, and I didn't know if you wanted to just maybe give a quick update.
Just recently, we've experienced two medical calls, if you want to call them, which regarding were overdoses of heroin. I have to say that both came out of it, so that's a positive piece of it. We are looking at putting the Narcan in our cruisers. We do have the authorization from the Department of Public Health to do so. Once we type up a policy and get that into place, and we get our officers trained in it, and we will be applying to our sponsor, our hospital sponsor, which is St. Francis, for their authorization to, in fact, have the officers use it. There are some difficulties in it, in that the canisters cannot be kept in the vehicle on a hot day or freezing cold day. So we have to figure out how we're going to keep the right temperature for the narcotics. The training is being done for us by the Simsbury Volunteer Ambulance Association. They have a certified instructor, and we had the first one last week on Thursday. That was the first training session that we've had. It takes about an hour to be instructed on how to do it. We do think it's well worthwhile. Our ambulance does carry it, they have previous authorization compared to the police department, which just came about, came about at the end of June, the police officers can carry it and use it.
Thanks, chief. That will also be on our agenda for Thursday of public safety. That will also be on our agenda for Thursday of public safety. The, any other questions?
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good stuff.
We'll move now to First Selectment Report. I just have a couple of quick reports. First, voting is continuing for Simsbury in the fan favorite town contest. We are in eighth place, so come on, people, we've got to do some better voting. The State of Connecticut is conducting a fan favorite town contest as part of an awareness to increase tourism throughout the state. We have put together a short video, and we have asked folks to vote for Simsbury on You can go directly to the Connecticut Tourism page and vote. Voting will continue until July 25th. The winner will get Simsbury the bragging rights for a year, and also much recognition in all of the tourism brochures. So there's a lot to see and do right here in our own community. We hope that folks will get out and vote. Next, just reminding folks that taxes are due no later than August 1st. Postmarks of August 1st are accepted. We are encouraging folks to register online and pay their bill online. If they pay by check, there's no cost at www.simsbury.CT.gov. You can also mail your check directly to Town Hall or drop it off. So just want to remind folks, August 1st is the deadline. Good news for Simsbury, we are ranked as the top bicycle-friendly town in Connecticut. This is a new ranking, first of its kind by Bike Walk Connecticut, rates cities and towns on how bike and walk friendly they are. It's part of a new Complete Streets Initiative, which is designed to make towns safer, more walkable, and livable. And the top five communities that have been identified include Simsbury, number one, New Haven, New Britain, Glastonbury, and Middletown. I want to thank our hardworking staff and the Bicycle Advisory Committee volunteers and the support of our residents. The scorecards and rankings are online, and it's really great for the town. It gets such terrific publicity, brings more folks to our community to live and to buy homes and to work and locate their businesses here. So we're noticing a big economic development boom as a result of our traction. We wanted to just update the board that the CCM Connecticut Conference of Municipalities Prescription Drug Discount Program that the Board of Selectmen approved now has 1,743 claims. So far, residents have saved a total of $93,200. The program is available free to Simsbury residents who do not have health insurance, who do not have a traditional pharmacy benefit, or who have prescriptions which are not covered by insurance. We make the cards available free at Social Services and at Town Hall, and I want to thank CCM for bringing this program to the town of Simsbury. Finally, we have another household has its Waste Collection Day scheduled. This next, we just recently had one on June 14th. We had about 508 vehicles take advantage of the service. 299 were from Simsbury, so we had a great turnout, and the cost of the town was $31,263. This is a savings to our town by running it ourselves. So I'd like to thank Tom Roy and his staff, and we will be having another household that has this collection day in August. So folks should watch for that date. That's it for my reports. We'll move now on to action items. The first is approving the tax refunds. We have a list from our tax collector, $1,713.08. The tax refund recipients are listed for your review and approval, and happy to answer any questions.
Move that we approve.
I'll second that.
Any questions? All in favor, say a cry by eye. Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Our next item is authorized, the referral of, the offer for donation of open space floodplain property located at Dorset Crossing to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendation back to the Board of Selectmen. We also have the option to refer it to the Open Space Committee as well, if the Planning Commission so chooses. This is a request that came from Simsbury Specialty Housing. If you recall, Simsbury Specialty Housing is housing for multiple sclerosis patients. It's the first of its kind in New England, and we're pleased that they have located to our community. They have noticed that there's a, about .36 acres that abut open space that they would like to donate to the town. Part of the reason is that there's a hardship by having floodplain insurance that they would be required to hold on such a tiny piece of property. So they had asked the town to consider this. We've already sent it to Town Council to look at the issues that would be raised by this. And there are two items that the recipient, or the requister, would have to meet. One is that they would not need any additional approvals, and the second is to outline the process that they would need to accomplish the legal donation. I do suggest that we have a discussion tonight, and then if the board is interested, we would refer to planning to get their input as well. So we are not looking for final approval tonight, or final decision tonight. Any questions? Lisa?
I just wanted to confirm, because there's no building on the property that will be donated, there will be no requirement for the town to get flood insurance on that piece of property. Is that correct?
That's correct. We did ask Town Council today whether, if the town would be burdened by seeking additional insurance if we were to accept the donation, and the answer was no.
And then the second question I had is whether we can have discussions about the possibility of the donors retaining the maintenance on the property.
We can certainly, you know, we're going to be having a special meeting tomorrow night to talk about open space and the burdens of maintaining. So it's a timely question. We, if we're like, we could certainly ask the Specialty Housing to consider what the requirement would be for maintenance and to make a commitment and a requirement that they maintain that piece. It's a small piece, and I'm having staff...
It's contiguous to their, yeah.
Yes, it's contiguous to town open space.
It shouldn't be that big a burden on them.
Nope. And Cheryl Furo, if you need to... That was my question. Okay.
Excuse me.
Yeah, feel free to take care of yourself.
Go have a drink.
Yeah. There's plenty of water if you need.
Oh, dear.
Maybe a lasagna. If you want to check and make sure she's okay.
She's okay.
She is.
Only, only a sister could say that.
Oh, you're her sister.
Okay, thank you.
Spoken like a sister.
Sister and sister.
Okay, all right. We'll leave it to you then. So that, I will ask that question of the Specialty Housing.
Okay, thank you.
I think that would be very appropriate.
So, Mary, do you need a vote for a referral from us?
I do.
All right, so I move that we...
I have one more little question, and I just haven't had a chance to look at the map, so we were a little delayed, but the land abuts our property, right?
Correct.
So we don't need a needs man to get onto the open space.
Correct, yes. Access is easily obtained. Is there a motion for referral?
Motion, or move that we refer to the Planning Commission for consideration.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is to apply for a Vibrant Communities Initiative grant application. As is typical, we receive notices of grants about a week before they're due. We follow the same process that we follow when we receive them. We received notification, there was an organizational meeting on June 27th. We did send staff to attend to make sure that the town was protected if we did want to apply. We then held several meetings following that workshop, and it was the consensus of the Town Planner and Main Street Partnership, and a referral to Economic Development Commission that the town apply for this grant. There's no match. It's intended to create a new regulatory plan for the Wheatug Village and Green. This would be to implement the study that we did to create historic village feel and reduce sprawl in the Wheatug area. And Hiram felt very strongly that this, even though the funding is only, no more than $50,000, that would get us to implement the excellent suggestions of a park and more of a, more use of the bus stop, the bike trails, and promoting the village district feel, and it was worth applying. So we, we do need authorization from the Board of Selectmen to apply for this grant. Any questions?
I move that we authorize the First Selectmen to pursue the grant.
I'll second it.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next item is to accept the recommendation of the Culture Parks and Rec Commission to allow the private rental of Simsbury Farms' Apple Barn. If you recall, this was discussed during our budget workshops. We were talking about trying to close the gap of the Special Revenue Fund, and the Culture Parks and Rec Commission indicated they were pursuing increasing their revenue. One way is to allow Simsbury Farms' Apple Barn to be used for private parties. It's currently not allowed. It's a great facility, it's small, but it might accommodate some right-size children's birthday parties, or shower, wedding showers, or family get-togethers, and it's a good use of a municipal facility. So, yeah, for motion to approve. I'll move that.
Second.
Any questions?
I have a question. On, where did I see it? On one of the documents, oh, on the last page, Rules and Regulations M. We talk about the last line, "to immediately revocation of the permit, comma, illegal actions or monetary penalties." Shouldn't that be "and/or" so that we could take any of those actions together? Under M, which is the last page of that section, Mary.
M? Oh.
The very last section. This permit, legal action, or monetary penalty.
I think it's, I think that it could, it says ranging from, Mike, so I think that...
Oh, okay, so we're covered either way.
It says may result too.
May result, okay. I'm fine, I just want us to have all our options.
I think it...
It's good to clarify publicly.
It indicates the intention that you desire.
Somebody runs amok.
Good point.
That one's going to run amok.
That's what you say now.
There you go. Can I have a motion to approve?
We have it.
Yeah, you have it. Lisa's motion, I'm the second.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Our next item is to authorize the First Selectmen to execute a lease agreement for the use of the greenway parking area. This is standard language that we work with the state for. It's to allow parking, and we need, I think we've done this for 20 years, so it's a typical lease agreement, yeah. But we do need to read the resolution into the record, so if someone would like to make the motion and read the resolution into the record, Mike? That would be great.
Mike? I'll make the motion.
It should not be me.
No, we'll be sharing.
I couldn't just share.
Susan, you take one for the team. I move that the filing resolution is approved. Resolved that Mary A. Glassman, First Selectman of the Town of Simsbury, is hereby authorized to sign the agreement entitled Lease Agreement between State of Connecticut Document of Department of Transportation and Town of Simsbury, State Route 202, US Route 10, and State Route 315, Town of Simsbury, File Number 128-000-073. Further resolved that Mary A. Glassman, who is the First Selectman of the Town of Simsbury, is empowered to execute and deliver in the name and on behalf of the Town of Simsbury lease documents and holds the position until December 2015 for execution of this lease.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Our next item is approving another resolution accepting a steep grant in the amount of $350,000 and authorizing the execution of the Town-State Agreement for Improvement of Sidewalks and Street Surfaces on Riverside Road, Drake Hill Road, Bridge, and Hot Meadow Street. Again, want to thank Jeff Shea and Rich Switzke for working on this very complicated grant application that we put in. I've met with the residents of Riverside Road and...
Excuse me. I just skipped a question.
Oh. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Well, let me just finish that, and we'll go back. So the steep grant is, the Riverside Road residents are very happy with that, and I'm sure they're anxious for us to approve it. Going back to F, and thank you for pointing that I already had that checked off on my list, too. This is another resolution authorizing the town to execute an agreement for acceptance of the 2014 grant to connect to the Nutmeg Network in the amount of $27,100. This is a very significant grant. This was initiated by the Capital Region Council of Governments, and I'm very proud to chair that group. But we were one of the first towns to apply for the grant. This grant will allow us to work with our neighbors and our friends to regionalize a lot of our services. Some of the services we're really focusing on right now is the back-office functions to consolidate finance functions, and before towns can share finance software packages and some very expensive software materials that we will be able to get for significant reduction and provide even greater efficiencies, we have to be connected. This will also improve our GIS functions, which you'll be hearing more about, and it goes a long way to improving efficiency, regionalizing, and lowering costs for our taxpayers. So it's really a terrific grant. I want to thank Tom Cook and Rick Bizzano and the Technology Committee for their leadership in applying for this grant right out of the box. The towns that haven't received the grant now have to get in a queue, and fortunately, we're at the top of the pack here. So it's really a big win for Town of Simsbury. So can I have a motion to approve?
We need a resolution.
And it would need to be read.
I'll do it.
Thank you.
I'm done.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make that motion. I should have done the first one.
I don't think you have to read the certification. I think you start with a res...
Just the result?
Yeah.
Resolved that the Town of Simsbury may enter, may enter into with and deliver to the State of Connecticut Office of Policy and Management, OPM, any and all documents which OPM deems to be necessary or appropriate for the Town of Simsbury to accept a 2014 grant to connect to the Nutmeg Network in the amount of $27,100, $27,100. And further resolved that Mary A. Glassman, as First Selectman of the Town of Simsbury, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the Town of Simsbury, and to do and perform all acts and things which she deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents. The undersigned further certifies that Mary A. Glassman now holds the office of First Selectman, and that she has held the office since December 2nd, 2013.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Ah, the next item, the next one you've been waiting for. This is the document to authorize a steep grant in the amount of $350,000. We did receive this grant in 2012, but we finally got the contract from the State of Connecticut, so it has taken some time for the state to issue the contract documents. And now that we have them, we're ready to go, and we're really excited to really improve the ability of that road to stay dry as much as we can to improve the drainage on that street. So I'd like a motion to, if someone could read the resolution into the record.
No.
Please, this one's short.
It's tiny.
You're smart. You waited till the end.
Okay, I'll do it. I'll move that. Thank you.
Resolution, resolved that Mary A. Glassman, First Selectman, is hereby authorized to sign the agreement entitled Steep Grant Agreement between the State of Connecticut and the Town of Simsbury for the Improvement of Sidewalks and Street Surfaces on Riverside Road, Drake Hill Road, Bridge, and Hot Meadow Street, adopted by the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Simsbury this day on the 14th of July.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, unanimously. Thank you very much. Our next item is a three-year agreement for the operation of the town's bulky waste landfill. The record will reflect that Mr. Payne has recused himself since it involves a contract with Payne's. For background, the Board of Selectmen authorized Tom Roy to go out to bid for a three-year contract for operating our bulky waste facility. We issued an RFP on May 8, 2014. Two firms responded. I want to thank both firms for responding. And Tom Roy and Rich Switzke did a thorough analysis and determined that Payne's was the lowest fees for residents to use the facility. As such, they're recommending a three-year contract with Payne's. The documents that are open to the public compare the permit costs and the bulky waste costs between the two responders, and you can see that the contract with Payne's was estimated at $64,022 compared to the other responder. If you look at the details of the town's bid comparison is also provided to you, and can see pretty much in every category, we had a very favorable response from Payne's and we thank, thank Payne's for doing that for us. And the only item that was curious to me was the scrap metal. And not sure why that one was free and one was not, but maybe that's something we could find out whether that, the scrap metal, allowing scrap metal to be brought to the landfill free would have a positive effect on getting some of the scrap metal out of the waste stream. I'm not sure, so, but that was the only question that, that didn't make sense because all the other numbers were so much more favorable. Does the board have any question?
I just wanted to confirm because this is valued at $64,000, two bids is enough. Our bid policy requires three bids and.
Yes.
Contract's $7,500 to $25,000, but over $25,000, if it's advertised for at least 10 days prior, it does not have any minimum requirement of bids.
Thank you, Lisa. I know you, you raised that question earlier today, so we appreciate that. We did have our finance director take a look at the bid procedure and he determined that this, this did meet the requirements of the bid procedure, but, you know, we did ask the finance director to take a look at that because.
In the past, we, we did a, two-person bid that we had to go rebid.
Yes, there was a bid that we had only two responders and that required a state contract and we were required to have three bidders. So, we did have to rebid that and we did have to make sure that we did get three bidders. In this particular case, we did review, and there's no requirement to have three bidders. We did advertise in the paper and these are the only responders that we got, but that's an important question.
And it's a curious thing in our bid policy that you need to have three responders for something valued at $75,000 to $25,000, but over $25,000, you don't need that.
I did ask the finance director, I know he's looking at policies with the Board of Finance and I will make sure that we refer that question to the finance director and the Board of Finance. It is something worth looking at.
And one of the theories they do that is so that you don't give it to local guys and if you do public, if it's out there with enough public notice, then it's acceptable to take the two bids. So, there's a rationale behind it.
Absolutely. And, you know, the bidding policy is designed to do just that, protect the public and protect the taxpayers to make sure we're getting the best price for our services and that is a curious question, so we will make sure that we, we take a look at that again.
Great.
Any other questions? Sorry. Okay.
I move that we approve as recommended by Tom Roy and Rich Switzke, the contract for three years.
Thank you. I'll second that. Thank you. I just, the, one other, I wanted to just report that the Town of Simsbury, at our Farmington Valley Collaborative, we were talking about other services the towns could offer. One is collection of composting or composting and the second is collection of textiles. And there are companies that will provide those services and Tom Roy had said that those, the town could pursue those without any interference with this contract, so I just wanted to make sure I said on the record that we had explored textile collections and bins that towns could provide and, and that would be allowed under the contract that we approved. Okay. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Can I ask Mr. Payne to come back in? If he wants. Next item is the acceptance of the resignation of Jackie Bados as an alternate member of the zoning Board of Appeals with our thanks.
This resignation is supposed to have an appointment to zoning right on its heels.
We did not receive that.
We should table this item for this evening.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to table?
Move that we table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is just a reminder that there is an open space meeting tomorrow night with the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance. Parks and Rec Commission had also requested that they be invited and they have so been invited, as well as the Open Space Committee and the Conservation Committee, so we'll look forward to seeing everybody tomorrow night. Next item is the regular meeting of June 23rd. You'll notice that there is a yellow highlighted changes in your minutes. The reason that this is in our minutes, typically we do not put in items in our minutes that we didn't take action on, but because the zoning commission had referred the Hartford Code to our board, the minutes needed to reflect that we did discuss it. So, I did ask that the, the minutes be included, the discussion be included so that we have a record to send to the zoning commission as part of their record that when they adopted the code and congratulations to the zoning commission for taking that action, that they will see that they, we did honor their request to discuss it. So, that's the only change. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I move that we approve with the suggested changes.
I'll second that. Comments, corrections?
I have one.
Lisa.
Although it's gonna be not on the page, but it's under Legislative Update from State Representative John Hampton. The last sentence is, he said there was funding and grants were added. Could we change that to, he said funding and grants were added? So, just eliminate there was.
Okay. Thank you. Any other changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We'll move to Subcommittee Reports, Personnel. We had a busy night.
We had a long night. I want to thank staff and Lee Erdman and Counsel Bob DiCresenzo there, who was there to assist us with this. We had a long substantive discussion. I want to thank the members of the Personnel Subcommittee, very thoughtful discussion, really had done their homework on some complicated issues. We'll go in the order. The Personnel Subcommittee did not, we tabled the approval for, the proposal for the compensation framework for determination of a full-time unaffiliated employee compensation for fiscal year 2015, because unfortunately we did not have it listed on our agenda, so we, and because it was a special meeting, we cannot consider. But the board was of the consensus that it would be fine to discuss it at this board and it is on our agenda here. So, you have in your packets. The submission from Mr. Cook, the Personnel Subcommittee and the Full Board of Selectmen approved the proposed compensation framework for a full-time unaffiliated employee compensation. And a couple of things that are worthy of note is our unaffiliates do not receive step compensation, so while most of our union employees do, you'll see an increase in salary, but you often don't see, what the public doesn't see is that step increases, which can be valued as much as the increase in salary sometimes. So, it can be, so the unaffiliates are dealing with that. The other thing you'll notice in the compensation framework is that the unaffiliates are increasing their OPEB contribution. So, although you will see an increase in salary, they are increasing their OPEB contribution half a percent to base, of base rate, if it's that accurate, Tom, that I struck. Okay. So, what you have in the chart, and this is something we have done in the past, we look at the market reference range with the idea that you don't want to just keep giving raises. If someone's at the top of their range for what the position is, what do you do? Well, we can give a cash component. So, that's why the market reference range is important. And then we also sort of broke it down by salary and a cash component. So, while you might see under the high superior rating, a 1.5, market reference rates 1.5 and a 1.5 cash component for a 3.0, remember that there's the OPEB contribution, which deducts half a percent there, so the net is 2.5 at the most. I did ask Tom at the, before the meeting to confirm that there is enough money in the town budget and what the high end of everybody got superior rankings would be.
And that comes out to just over $20,000. If everybody, which is, you know, not, that's.
Well, within what we budgeted for, and we budgeted for that in our, where is that budgeted for?
That's, there's, there's a negotiated salary line that's, I think, has more than enough to cover that.
And this is similar to what we have done in the past. It's a system we developed over time over the last really four years.
That's correct. And the only other thing to add is that we are in the process of doing a market reference range update on the positions that we have, so, but that's, that's a significant part of this framework, that's one. The other thing is that depending on what happens with several positions here tonight, those positions, if they are adjusted, would not be eligible for the 2.5 percent. They would, I think, be eligible for the, for the offset for the OPEB contribution arguably up to you, but I would recommend that, but other than that, they would not be.
Eligible for the cash or the salary component at this point. That's, that's my understanding. We did not have a discussion of personnel, so I would request that there is any issues of discussion. We have those now before we vote.
Thank you. I, just to update on the process, as we have followed in the past, we are in the process of having department heads complete their reviews of their staff. Those are done on an annual basis and then we will review, I will review department head staff and then we will have meetings and decide on the compensation and I'll report that to the Board of Selectmen. So, we're on track to, during our timeframe and we are within budget to fund those positions within budget. Any questions? We discussed this during the budget process, so there's nothing different that's presented here tonight than what the board has done in the past and what the town practice has been in the past and what the board discussed during the budget process as well.
And it has been budgeted for.
And Tom, just so we're clear, that any other positions that we might discuss tonight are not going to have any negative budget impact on the.
That's correct. Everything we, we, as we saw in that Excel spreadsheet that we looked at earlier, there is funding availability for everything.
Is the board comfortable to make a motion tonight?
Move that we approve Mr. Payne's statement.
Thank you. Do we have a second? I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? More precarious, thank you. Next item is the position descriptions and salaries.
We had a long and lively discussion on this. Want to thank especially town staff, Bobby DiCresenzo and Lee Erdman, as we struggled to reconcile the new charter with what is already permitted under the charter. We did get confirmation from Counsel that the recommendations Personnel Subcommittee made are permitted by charter and there's no, no change to the charter. This is all permitted. We are doing everything within our rights through the charter. There's no legal, we don't have to hold a hearing. It's all just standard process.
These are job descriptions. We do job descriptions all the time.
We do them all the time. So, thank you, Sean. That's a nice way to summarize. No, it's very good. I appreciate it. So, the first one, the Personnel Subcommittee voted to approve the following position descriptions and salaries. They voted, we voted to approve, and I just want to pass this out because we did do it with changes and I had Sean do those changes. And this was done, Bob DiCresenzo asked me to make, point out, this is done based on the recommendation of the first selectman in the memo that we received earlier. And that memo from Mary.
June 25th.
June 25th. So, we do have, so what the.
We have one for the secretary.
I do not have one for the secretary. Okay. So, so what we did with the recommendation from the first selectman was, we tweaked it, we revisited and made a few changes. Those are reflected in the current job description that you have there and then in the, in your packet, and then at the meeting, we made two additions to the descriptions you have in the packet and I'll highlight those. Under the 1, 2, 3rd bullet, under general government operations included, and I'd really encourage Sean and Cheryl to make sure we got this one right, this is what Sean and I think we approved. Stays appraised of and monitors pending legislation that may affect municipal operations and finances, secures policy direction from the first selectman to communicate with elected official offices or lobbyists. And that is something that Tom does do and that we need him to do.
I think that's a good addition. I just want to point out, you know, I think it's important that the Board of Selectmen and the elected officials feel confident that they have staff person they can call when they have questions and make sure that they're promptly answered or that they're given, you know, if they have a question that they need staff to attend a meeting or if they have questions, I think it's important that the board feel comfortable. So, I think that was a good suggestion to put this in because we are doing that in practice, but I think it's important, particularly for newly elected officials, to know that there's someone, a point person in town that they can go to if they have questions.
And rely on.
So, I appreciate that addition.
Mary, we kept it with first selectman because we didn't want to step on the, we can't give direction to town staff provision of the charter.
Yeah, that's consistent with the charter, so I think it's a good, a good addition and it reflects what we're currently doing and I think putting it in the job description was a, a good, a good addition.
Just the one thing I'll point out, the, the Board of Selectmen is the policymaking board, but we can't tell staff to recommend. We would make the recommendation to you and you could tell staff to make those appointments.
We might be sending staff in totally different directions, so it does make sense to have.
One point of contact. And then the second thing we added, because I'm on the Technology Committee, is on the above required knowledge, skills, and abilities, the 1, 2, 3rd bullet above we added maintains and updates personnel-related documents and other human resources content on the town's website. We wanted to make sure there was a dedicated person who was responsible for that and of course, Tom, we'll have a few people who are reporting to him who can assist with that.
I think, again, another great suggestion that is reflective of what we're doing currently, but I think as we move into technology, our reliance more and more on technology and providing access to services in town hall online as opposed to coming into town halls even to become greater, so this is actually reflecting what we're doing.
And it's also consistent with, open and transparent government that we are trying to promote always. So, I would ask Cheryl and Sean if they feel that that reflects what we discussed?
It does.
It does and, and again, just a point of note, we, we did obviously revise the salary range in, in addition to the job description to be in line with what we think is appropriate based on other towns, based on, you know, and no, no small part of the research that Mr. Erdman did.
Right.
Obviously, we think in line with what we're asking the occupant of this position to do.
Yes, and I, the one thing that Mr. Erdman pointed out that I thought was interesting and well-advised was when we get to Sean's, you'll see an overlap of $5,000 where they could be at the same salary and the reason why we do that is for succession planning and enables us to transition from one to the other. It's consistent with succession planning.
So, looking down the road, that is not, not necessarily what we're doing right now.
Yes. Precisely.
Move the budget items.
Correct. So, I would ask that this, well, we have your, we need, for us to vote on this, we need your recommendation, Ms. Glassman, because per the charter, we cannot do this unless we have you. We had your recommendation from June 25th. We made tweaks and I want to confirm that you are still recommending.
I am and I'd be happy to move the approval of the job description as presented.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all for your hard work and thought on this.
The second thing we voted to approve was the Deputy Director of Administrative Services' revised position description with a salary of $90,000 effective retroactive on July 1, 2014, funding in part by the Board of Finance. Closing of the position, I would like to add to this, an amendment that we also closed the finance position that is currently open that will be used to fund Mr. Kindles, I mean Kimball's position.
Any questions?
Just, not to be a pain, but don't we have to do the position first and then change the salary for it?
I think we did that in our last meeting. We actually approved the new salary range without the description.
Well, we changed the salary range of the personnel based on the recommendation of our.
Because I think we need to do all the job descriptions first and then do all the salaries for the, the actual people in the job descriptions.
I think you do both at the same time.
Whatever's easier. We, we took them one at a time.
I think we did the, yeah, we did the one at a time personnel, but I think we just passed the first one together, so do you want to do the second one together?
That totally makes sense.
Okay. So.
The board's comfortable with that.
Just make sure, because, not to be a stickler.
Bob, can we get that confirmed? Is that?
No, 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 not that. I don't think the motion included the current salary that we wanted to revise.
Oh.
So, we need to, we need to go back and do the director's position for the salary.
The salary range is in the description?
Right, but the actual amount we want to pay him.
Oh, I didn't read that, I'm sorry.
No.
Director of.
No, you should do that separately.
Yes, that's.
Why don't you do the, why don't you do the job description second and then go back and. I, I think what you approved was the range, so why don't you do that first?
And now we, and now we.
Then you can place the position in the range.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, right now we're on Deputy Director of Administrative Services with the range as approved by the Personnel Subcommittee.
Correct.
Is there a motion to approve that description?
With the, with the additional friendly amendment that we eliminate the position in the Board of, the Department of Finance that is being used to fund this position.
So moved with that amendment.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And then the third position we recommend to this board with your consent and approval based on the June 25th as amended through the Personnel Subcommittee is the Employee Benefits Coordinator new position description. Approval, and that one is approval upon, effective upon approval. The others are retroactive and correct.
I'd make a motion to approve.
We had a clarifier on that one, Lisa. Didn't we need to ask Mary a question?
I think I just, I think the clarifier was, did she approve it? Was there something else?
No, it's on the salary. It's when we actually fill it.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, it's when we fill it. So yeah, so we're good on this one. So I'll second that, the Employee Benefits Coordinator motion.
Thank you. Any comments, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll go back to the Director of Administrative Services.
Before you move on, Council has made a point that we are currently not in a position to close out the finance position here tonight, but that's something that can be added to our very next agenda to make sure that it's done.
You don't have a recommendation from the First Selectmen?
That's true.
Could we get a recommendation tonight to do that or no? We'll wait. Okay. I will change my motion back to the original without...
Reconsider the Deputy Director of Administrative Services position, move that as presented.
Yes.
Can I have a motion to do that? Is that your motion?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
I think it has to be yours.
I think it has to be mine.
Yeah.
I will move it. Is there a second?
I will second it.
Okay. Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Well, do, Mr. Cook, if you could please put this on our next Personnel Subcommittee and we'll, and then on the next Board of Selectmen.
Don't let that Mancini guy go hiring anybody tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Bob, for catching that. Then we will...
Place the amount? Do you want to make the recommendation?
Salaries. Okay, we'll start with the Director of Administrative Services. We had Lee Erdman do a salary review of the position. He looked at mayors with similar positions underneath them. He looked at first selectman-type governments with similar positions, and he looked at town manager with similar support in that and made the recommendation for the range. Within the range, the First Selectmen has recommended a revised salary description of 114,508 based on the recommendations of Mr. Erdman, this board. The Personnel Subcommittee did accept that recommendation and we are presenting it to you this board tonight.
Make a motion to accept the recommendation?
You making the motion? Just, it should probably be known that it should be retroactive to July 1.
Correct.
That would be my motion.
And that would be my second.
Any other comments, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Do you have a second recommendation?
Yes, based upon the recommendation that you submitted to the Personnel Subcommittee on June 25th and in consultation with Lee Erdman and staff, the recommendation made to the Personnel Subcommittee was to revise the salary of the Deputy Director of Administrative Services to $90,000 effective and retroactive to July 1, 2014.
I'd make that motion?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, the second thing, and we'll raise the question that Sean was talking about, the Employee Benefits Coordinator new position description with the salary recommendation, again upon your recommendation in consultation with Lee Erdman and town staff of $68,000 upon approval. And I will let Sean at this point and Cheryl, they had some concerns that I'd like them to share with the board before we move on.
I think the question just surrounded, have we already identified the person and the funds or is it premature to select that salary? I think was our, was the question.
That was my concern, was that. And that the, the salary that we designate is commensurate with the experience of the applicant. And since we don't officially know that yet, that we not assign a specific salary that is just commensurate with experience, subject to the hiring process.
I, I think we would, if it's okay with the board, I would ask that you approve the position with the salary and then direct town staff to make sure that we fill it with the appropriate person. We do have someone working for the town right now.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
Whether that person continues or not, you know, we can make sure that that, that the requirements are met before we fill that position. I think what's going on here, just for the public's awareness, is we have recently consolidated both the town and the Board of Ed health insurance plans. We saved $500,000 both in cost avoidance and in real savings. And what we are working toward is, now that we have one vendor, instead of six different plans that we're administering, there's a real opportunity for consolidation and further savings. We're working really hard with the Board of Ed to try to get one staff person or number of staff people, but the same people working in that department for both the town and the Board of Ed. This would be a significant change for the town's policy of having separate Board of Ed employees and separate town employees. This would really open the door to really other further efficiencies and consolidations. Many towns throughout Connecticut have consolidated their Board of Finance, I mean their Board of Ed and their town functions. We have not in Simsbury, and we're really looking forward to trying to create those efficiencies. This would be the first step in doing that because this would be a joint implementation. There was funding available through a lot of those, the insurance fund for this year that we have indicated with our finance director that we would like to try it this year. And when we come back to the budget process, hopefully we'll have a lot more savings to implement. We'll be able to show you how it's working. We'll be able to right-size the department to tell you how many staff, you know, both the town and the Board of Ed need. And I think it's really an exciting opportunity. So I appreciate the Personnel Subcommittee review of it and their good faith endorsement because I do think this is really a significant change in how we've done business in the past.
I think we're all on board with it. It just, the question, and again, I don't necessarily have a problem with it, Mary, but like we went out and found Joe Mancini and then we negotiated the salary with him and that, that came back for this board's approval with Joe and said salary.
Yes.
Right now, we have said salary but no Joe.
Yeah, and I think that, I think that if the board would approve the job description and the salary, I could have, I think we could save a lot of the agita that the board may feel with having a conversation and the Personnel Subcommittee can review that higher.
So they've got authorization for the position already and the range. So quite honestly, if you find somebody that's worth 75, you bring that back to us at 75, we could approve that.
As long as you're within the range.
Maybe you don't want us to pin you down to 68 tonight, I guess is my point.
If the board's comfortable, I could, I certainly could have, I think it would be appropriate for staff to make the recommendation of personnel as to who's filling that position and what their qualifications are. And if the board feels more comfortable with that, then we'll do that.
Again, conceptually for the record, I'm not, I'm not against 68.
But in the meantime, that position is being filled, just so that, so everyone is comfortable that we are, we are working on that position.
And there is money for funding for that position between now and the next Personnel Subcommittee meeting?
Yes.
Okay. So then we could do that. So we'll have two now agenda items for our next Personnel Subcommittee.
Tom, does that make sense?
They want, they want you to explain at the next Personnel Subcommittee, the recommendation for hiring.
Yes, the realities, we have a very highly competent fellow who's done with actually a superb background for us in this area and beyond, who's been operating as a contractor for some time. And he, he will undoubtedly be presented to you, but will do the due diligence and make that recommendation.
And again, I think that's just consistent with what we do with any candidate such as this that we would bring into the town.
No offense to Eric.
Not to be a fan.
No, I understand.
Well, also, if something goes wrong and say, you know, there's a complication and you have to go looking, then...
Well, the only concern I have is hanging on to him and over the...
Well, I think I, I mean, as long as the Board of Selectmen knows that between now and the next personnel, we're going to continue doing what we're doing. And that is have a qualified contractor who we've hired.
No, I'm not disagreeing with that at all.
So I just want to make sure that everybody's on board to, we're not going to stop and restart. Okay.
And there's no concerns with the person currently in the position. This is just a process.
Just a review.
And you can convey our...
All we need is a resume and a, and a brief description on, on why he's qualified for the position. Present the salary that you think is in line with those qualifications and I think we're good to go.
I think we have a good, I have a good understanding of what the Personnel Subcommittee wants and happy to, happy to provide that to you.
And we had one final, the Personnel Subcommittee voted to approve the part-time project manager job description that you have in your packets for a one-year period ending fiscal year 2015.
I just want to comment, I do, I do appreciate that Rich Switzke did retire. We can't make him not retire. He brought with him his years of experience and I think that what the, and we do respect our new town engineer, and so we defer to our new town engineer Jeff Shay as to what's in his best interest. And after consulting with the number of projects that we have pending and also the Board of Ed, the Board of Ed had the option of going out and consulting for those review and services. That is in our capital projects budget, so we certainly have budgeted for those. And Jeff Shay felt very comfortable after discussing with Rich that we could not only continue the expertise of Rich, which is on a very limited basis, and you'll see very specifically that his, his review is very limited, but also it's a reduced cost to what we would be buying on the open market for those consulting services. So we, we are mindful that we don't like our employees to retire and then come back, but in cases where we can keep their expertise at a reduced cost to our residents, it's in our best interest to do that.
And with no additions to the pension.
Correct.
And again, I have no objections to this. I just want to make sure that Jeff feels empowered to transfer and really take over. And as I joked around in Personnel, breaking up is hard to do and it takes time and you got to do it. But he's a great guy. We think the world of him, right?
Yeah, and I think it was, I think it's great that the Board of Selectmen, you know, made it very clear that this is a very limited engagement and it's a win-win for both Rich to continue to provide town services at a very limited basis. And it really works well for our town engineer who's transitioning a lot of projects. We have more projects than we've had in the last 20 years. And I think our economic development efforts with all of our planning are really paying off. We are going to be hearing, we have a significant increase in our revenues and our building permits as we close out the year. We are over budget in all of our building permits by almost double. So really, there's a lot happening in town, a lot of really good, exciting things. And, you know, this is going to provide a little relief.
By over budget, you mean we have more...
We budgeted, conservatively, for $400,000 and our revenues are at 700,000.
It's a good kind of over budget.
Just want to confirm.
So we've done a very good job.
We'd be having a different meeting tonight if we were under budget.
And you know, it's a credit to our staff and also our economic development efforts that businesses are coming in. We're having a lot of ribbon cutting, so it's all good. All right, so can I have a motion to approve the last item with the part-time project manager?
I move that we approve the part-time project manager for the fiscal year 15 as proposed.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our last item is executive session.
Given the timing of the year and the fact that we are in the summer season, would it be possible to get the board to, I would like to, if at all possible, do a very quick Subcommittee meeting once we've done our research on the Employee Benefits Coordinator position. And provided that the credentials are commensurate with proposed salary and you all approve, would it be possible for the Board of Selectmen to essentially authorize the Personnel Subcommittee to move forward with approval of that, of the person for that position so that we don't have to reconvene the full board?
My understanding that, based on the discussion, is that the Personnel Subcommittee would be reviewing the qualifications of candidates. It was not part of the motion that it would come back to the full Board of Selectmen unless the Personnel Subcommittee wanted that to do. They could certainly recommend that. So I think we'll leave it unless the board has an objection. Personnel Subcommittee will be reviewer of that position. If they feel a need to bring it back to the Board of Selectmen, they certainly can do that. But if they feel they don't, we can authorize the funding.
I would think we would take the same position that we do and it's not a director-level position, therefore it doesn't need to come back.
This is why I...
So we'll make a recommendation and then we'll, we'll send it to Personnel if they feel there's need for more discussion.
Thank you for that clarification.
Before we go, can we just get dates for Tom when we can do this?
That would be great.
Absolutely.
So we just need a motion to adjourn to executive session. We will not take action, so there'll be no action coming out. We just want to update the board on a potential real estate issue.
Move that we adjourn to executive session?
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I don't think we could have done that.
I know. Now we got executive session. I can't have talk.